Supervisors meeting for August 11th, a special session. So we are underway. Now, did you determine whether or not Supervisor Goodman is going to call in or not?
Chairman, at this time Supervisor Goodman will not be calling in.
Okay, all right. All right. So first item of business is discussion approval or disapproval of an amendment to the fiscal year 2224 cooperative agreement. Heather, thank you. Tell us what we're voting on here.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Heather Patel with the Finance Department. The cooperative agreements we executed back on July 7th. And what that is, is under our HUD program as an urban county. Communities can join our cooperative, for lack of a better word, instead of going through the state. And so Eloy, Florence, and Mammoth are participating with us. We execute a cooperative agreement to basically outline whose roles and responsibilities things are. And within that agreement, there is one clause that talks about the federal acts, Fair Housing Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act, things like that that are required to be involved in the CDBG program. HUD did change the language to be a little bit more lengthy. So they threw in a bunch of extra words added to the end of their acts. And then they did throw in a final sentence that talks about if our communities fail to comply, that it falls back on the county, which has always been the case, but they wanted us to specifically say that in the agreement. So they asked that we do just a small amendment, just to change that language, and that's what's before you today.
Okay. Any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Chairman. So there's a, you know, that's described as a small change, but in the language of Section 8, there are some big changes. And in Section 8, line 5, the language changes from "we will strive to affirmatively further the goal of fair housing" to "will affirmatively further the goal of fair housing." So that kind of ups the ante. We have a compliance requirement. And in Section 8, line 6, as it's written on my page, it's "agree to comply" to "will comply." And then the changes are significant in how that we have specific performance requirements. In the bottom of the example provided for Section 8, we now have tools in place to make sure, excuse me, I have. So anyway, what I'm getting at here, I was hoping, is Chris Keller here? So there's language in here that changes. And it says, "A policy prohibiting excessive use..." To get this money, we have to have a policy prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within its jurisdiction against any individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. And you have to have a policy enforcing applicable state and local laws against physically barring entrance or exit from a facility or location, which is the subject of such nonviolent civil rights demonstrations within jurisdictions. So that's a pretty significant change from the old. So we're adding, through our HUD, through accepting this money, we are adding some requirements for law enforcement and how we handle civil demonstrations. And I believe that once this agreement is signed, the Department of Justice will have authority to come to Pinnell County and do investigations of our law enforcement agencies based on the language in Section 8. And the question is, how much federal control of our local governments do we want to give up with this agreement? Obviously, this comes with a lot of money. And Ms. Patel, do you know how much money is associated with this agreement?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. Supervisor Kavanaugh. So I kind of want to go through each of those items. So first of all, the changing from the language "will strive" to "will affirmatively further fair housing," we have already been doing that for years. So there are certain things that HUD asks us to do to affirmatively further fair housing, so it's not going to be a change. Then there was the, sorry, I was trying to keep track of them all. The comments regarding the Department of Justice or the legal, that stuff, that was in our original cooperative agreement. That has not changed with this amendment.
Okay.
So that was already approved under our, on July 7th, sorry.
But change from earlier, passed agreement a year ago, was this in here?
Yes, I believe that it was. I wasn't here when the cooperative agreements were done back in 20, but, I'm sorry, 19. But the agreements, the cooperative agreements that were presented on the 7th of July did include that language. This amendment is just regarding the civil rights and affirmatively furthering fair housing. And so both of those things, you know, with any federal program, you have to comply with civil rights. But affirmatively furthering fair housing, we have been doing that. And then as far as the money is concerned, we receive about 1.8 million every year under the CDBG program.
I want to halt you right there because I'm going to stop when you said, yet we have to comply with civil rights. I'm not concerned about complying with civil rights. My concern is, in Portland, the nonviolent protesters burned down buildings. And so is the agreement, is this agreement that we cannot stop civil protests, does it mean we have to let people come in here and disrupt this meeting? Do we have to, you know, what is the criteria with the Justice Department now? We don't know. So continue.
Okay. So then in addition to the CDBG 1.8 million, we get about 600 in home funds and another 150 in our emergency solutions grants every year. And then, of course, because of COVID and everything, there's been some additional, several millions of money in COVID funding and American Rescue Plan Act monies. So there is a significant influx of those things. So under our home program, that comes into play with housing. And so fair housing is applicable to that. But as far as the legal stuff, then yes, I'll just hand that over to Chris to respond to that.
Okay. And Mr. Keller, does the agreement define nonviolent?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I'm not able to answer that question because I don't have the agreement fully in front of me, and I was not the attorney that actually reviewed that. I can have our attorney that did review that, you know, get back with you. Had we known that you, this was going to be a question, I would have had her attend this meeting so that we could have answered that, but I was unaware that that was an issue at this point.
Okay. Mr. Kavanaugh, Supervisor Kavanaugh, in the future, I mean, we are given these agendas in advance so that you can review them and you can take those questions to staff prior to these meetings. And they will have these answers for you or have the proper staff available. To bring this type of stuff right out in front in this decorum at this point in time is difficult and actually deteriorates the communication flow. So I'm just going to ask that in the future, if you can approach staff with these questions prior to the meetings, they will be glad to have the answers for you here at the meeting.
And I think we're getting these on Fridays. I think we're going to change that to another day to allow more time for preparation. Is that true or no?
Okay. What's, typically, we do post on Friday. Is that correct?
Chairman Miller, typically, the clerk of the board office do post on Friday. However, one of the things that we have done is, is that all of the districts do have access to Board View. And so what Board View allows the district staff and supervisors to do is to view the actual agenda prior to posting. Typically, Board View is turned on on Wednesdays or Thursdays. So two, one to two days prior to posting, staff will have availability to view those items.
And the caveat to that is that there can be amendments or there can be other items added right up till Friday. So there are times when there's an action item that needs to be brought before. But the bulk of the agenda is available prior to Fridays. And you should have access to that through, what's it called, Board View. And so I just think that that's the way we need to approach this going forward.
So we shouldn't have a discussion in the public about these items?
Well, you can have a discussion, but I would tell you that if you had this information given to staff prior to this meeting, they would have the answers for you in this meeting. I do that all the time. If I see an agenda item, the first thing I do, if I have a question about an agenda item, I reach out to the county manager's office and the department in which the question is, you know, is presented. Gives them opportunity and time to prepare the answers. And sometimes they can give me the answer right then and there. But you know what I do? I say, "That's great, but I'm going to ask the question in open meeting anyway." So, because I do think it's something that the public should hear. But it's not, it's not fair to staff to ambush them at the podium.
I'm not ambushing. I'm simply asking questions.
Yeah, well, I think you are. When you're asking a question, I'm sorry, Counselor, am I getting too far off this topic? But my point is, you know, my job as the Chair is to make sure that this meeting runs smoothly and is productive. When we are asking staff for information that they have not been briefed on or been asked in advance, it's difficult for them to give you an answer when they're standing right there. Just as Mr. Keller said, he wasn't the attorney that reviewed it. He would have gladly had the attorney here that did review it, and you could have gotten your question answered. I'm just saying, for a smooth decorum of this meeting, we should be a little more respective of our staff and be able to allow them opportunity to prepare your answers. That's what I'm saying. Are there questions sometimes that maybe you didn't think of? Sure. But we're not here to try and set up something that the federal government, I can tell you, I've seen grants for 18 years. The feds have always had language in there that says, "We're going to do the civil rights. We're going to do this. We're going to do that." But you know what? I don't know of anybody that didn't get their grant, and I don't know of anybody that lost their grant money because they didn't follow what is federal law. I'm just saying that we do it all the time.
Well, I'm not meaning, certainly not meaning disrespect to a staff member by asking simple questions based on the agenda item.
Okay. But don't you, but...
I think we're going far afield here, and if you'd like to have a conversation with me afterward, we can do that.
Okay.
I think we've covered this pretty well.
Did you get your answers?
So are there specific, how are we, how, do we have performance measurements tool to meet the metrics that are in these requirements? Do we have performance tools? Do you know?
Thank you, Chairman. Supervisor Kavanaugh, we are required to meet certain expenditure requirements. There is nothing in our regular reporting that says, you know, any metrics on the civil rights and the affirmatively furthering fair housing as it's stated in this amendment. If asked what affirmatively furthering fair housing activities we did, we provide that. But there's nothing on the civil rights specifically for reporting.
And you're specifically, your job is grants, not HUD compliance? I mean, you're not in charge of HUD?
Mine is both. I'm not in charge of HUD, no, but I have to comply with what HUD requires.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Here we are seeing none. Board's pleasure at this time. Let's require a motion and a second.
I move we approve this amendment to the fiscal year 2224 cooperative agreement executed on July 7, 2021 with the communities of Eloy, Florence, and Mammoth for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. County assessor, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Actually, I didn't ask to be put on the agenda. Mr. Sertie, or Supervisor Sertie and Supervisor Goodman had some meetings with our staff on APNs and the backlog we have on. And so I do have a presentation that we can go through. It's fairly involved and detailed. But actually, I wanted to start out and find out, although Mr. Goodman's not here, I tried to reach him this morning. We missed each other. What exactly he wanted me to bring to the attention of the other board members who weren't briefed, and maybe Supervisor Sertie can give me some guidance before we get started.
Yeah. At issue are, we're in a thriving real estate economy, and it seems like the builders, the developers are ahead of the county processing and permitting process, which makes millions of dollars worth of real estate that's tied up that they can't sit on. They think they're fighting the clock, afraid that it's going to just be a cooling period, and they will have missed this opportunity and possibly even lose a bunch of money, which, you know, a lot of them, they finish a job, they use that money to do the next job, and that's how they go. They're not incredibly wealthy. So Supervisor Goodman and I then started looking into the process. Why is it slow? What's happening? And we found out that your staff may have been understaffed. And I think just last week, when we approved, we did approve some new positions, which I think you'll now tell us about, how, you know, how quick can we get them online? And are there any alternatives we can do? We looked into even, can we bring in temps just to sit them in front of a computer and do these splits and do the drafting that way? So anything you can offer, because the, like I said, the real estate folks and the developers are watching, and they will, they want some relief. They just want to see, how quick can we get it done? And they pull examples of how other counties are doing it and how we seem to be behind a curve, even though the county, in some ways, we're, you know, the example, other counties want to be like us. But in some ways, we can improve. So we'd like to see, how can we improve this process?
Okay. It's a good place to start. Well, as you know, and I echo what you've said, being in private business, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Sertie, for 35 years, in private business, you're able to usually expand your workforce to meet demand of your customers. In the case of the county, we have a different process as far as who we can hire and when we can hire and what range of salaries and so forth. We're restricted by a different set of parameters other than private business. It's frustrating for me, and it's frustrating for everybody. We're also in a very unusual time. We are looking at levels of activity in real estate that would mimic 2006, 2007. It's absolutely incredible. Pinnell County is not only in, is in the vortex, but we're in the superheated part of it. If you look at real estate sales and transfers, it's higher than almost anywhere in the country. It's unbelievable in terms of the population, if you measure it by the metrics of comp, like for like. Having said that, where we are right now is we do have four open positions in our department, in the department. We have everybody working overtime, although we can't force people to work overtime under county rules. We can only ask them to work overtime. We probably may come to you for two more in midterm because we're finding that nothing is slowing down as far as the amount of splits, combinations, and activity. We thought it might start to taper off, but it hasn't. So at this present time, if you came to our office and submitted a split for processing, it would be seven months before we'd be able to work that. The idea of subbing out some of the work to contractors has been explored. The problem there is the market has not yet met the demand. This is happening all across the country. So companies are springing up in response to what's going on and trying to set up operations where they could come to a county and sub out some of the work. However, they're not really up to speed yet. We're looking at that. So from the standpoint of managing this tide that we're running on, I would have to go back to last year. March of 2020, recall, everybody, we were just starting the COVID experience, and the county was, the county, the former county board was very cautious about adding new staff because we thought, geez, the world's going to come to an end economically, and we don't want to put a lot of people on payroll. So the people we were going to ask for 18 months ago, we backed off. And very shortly, within two months, we found, well, I guess that's not the case. We were, the real estate market actually accelerated as opposed to decelerated. So we were kind of caught. We did get in one new position last year, a senior drafting person. And then, once we had her, she was in our department, we promoted her, she gave her a better salary. As soon as we got her to that position, she went to another county, I should say, another entity. And so we have lost several employees. So if I could go to the, or, let's see if I can do it here. I can take you through the split process if you want. It's pretty involved, but this is what happens on every parcel that comes through our county by law. And...
Can I just ask?
Sure, please.
Splits and/or combos?
Basically, yes. Any parcel that we touch.
Whether we're dividing it or whether you're putting it together.
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear on that.
And I do think you should explain it for all the folks that will be watching this because a lot of them that are, they don't understand, so.
Okay. So what you see at the top of this slide, it says OnBase. That's our workflow software. And that's one of the tools we use to keep track of everything that we do in our office regarding properties. So it starts out with the recorder's office, and as you can see, we get the documents. We start out with the front counter review, then it goes, the meets and bounds, goes to cartography, which is our drafter's. We go to cartography again, interpret the intent of each document, identifies the parcel number that has been affected, others like the parent parcel that we start with, and then it's going to be divided into what we call child parcels. And then we go into the GIS system. And this is where we get a hangup with a lot of the smaller developers, is accuracy of the legal description and surveys. So the big companies, KB and, you know, Meritage and all those, they have a staff to do all this stuff. And it's always, when it comes to our office, it's ready to go. With the smaller developers, they don't have the resources, and a lot of times, we get caught there, and we have to go back to them and say, "We need this redone." Happens frequently. If it is okay, then we go to traverse file line, which is the line that the parcel's going to create, and describe the split. Then you go to, back to cartography again, and we go through all the different chains of title and the, for conveyance, and we go back in time. And the reason we do that is to make sure that the property owners have an accurate deed at the end of the process. No one wants to take over a piece of property and then find out later, "Oh, there was an easement we didn't see," or there's, who knows what it might be, or there might be a flood, flood issue, so or so. So after that, we go to the task to do the actual work on the parcels, and we assign it to a cartographer. They do notes, they go through the process and do the documents. So go next slide here. Okay. So then we have a split list, which is the, anything that might be related to the actual split that we get from the developer or from the permit department here at the county or community development. We have to match that against that. We list the parcel, print all the split documents. I could read it all off to you, but that'd be boring. Now we get to, the split's ready for processing and assigning an APN. And if they're ready to process the split, we begin here by locating the next available split. So we have a database of our parcel numbers that comes up, and then we go grab it and assign it to that particular parcel, or the department does. So then GIS reviews, or we go use GIS to review the traverses and the survey. In other words, the lines that we've drawn, the survey that has been submitted, figure out the total number of new parcels to be created, create the new parcels, enter them in, do the parcel builder, which is to actually sign the parcel numbers. That's a piece of software that actually assigns it to the GIS and through our software system. Then we entered in, as you know, the ownership tax area code, which is very important because that, there are multiple taxing authorities in the county besides the county government. There's school districts, water districts, fire districts, et cetera. So you have to make sure they're in the right place. Enter the subdivision information, special district taxing authorities, and all that has to be checked before the parcel can move on. Then we send it out to another member of the team for quality control. So if Supervisor McClure was working on the split, when he gets done with it, he feels confident it's ready to go, he handed it over to Supervisor Sertie and say, "Would you check all these things of the prior two slides to make sure we haven't missed anything?" So we always QC all our work so it doesn't come back on us. So original team member looks at any possible problems that may have come up from the quality control. And then we retire the parent parcel number. So if you have parcel A, it's going to become B, C, and D. We retire the A and B, C, and D become the new parcel numbers. And then we put those into GIS and in the county system. And so it shows up on our parcel viewer. And finally, I think, and then we go back to OnBase, which is our workflow product. We check and review all the data for OnBase for new parcel forms, update the notes and so forth. And you can see, we go back to Realware, which is our database of the properties themselves for the whole county. Add that to the Realware database, which is a new, now becomes a new taxable parcel. And we locate them and make sure that that's going to be properly evaluated, valued or assessed. And it goes on to all the data that, all the other departments that are affected by it, which is mainly the Treasurer's Office, but community development and, and the permit people need to know what we're doing. And then finally, we notify the owners and the appropriate developers, say, "Here's your new parcel split numbers. You can use them." And Planning Development gets all that, and then we go on to the next one. So that's the process that's in place. So looking historically, I thought this data would be interesting to the board. 2016, if you look at the green line, it's the number of splits we processed, 79 is the number of combinations, which is putting parcels together. And then subdivisions, we had 30 come into our office in 2016. And you can read the numbers for yourself, or you go up to 2020, and you see we jumped to 345, 107, and 66 subdivisions. And then here, to date in 2021, we're at 201, 86, and 48. And I just talked to the head of that department this morning, and she said she had 10 new subdivisions come in in the last week or so. So that number will be not 48, be probably 58. And then I thought I should measure against the number of employees versus the tasks that we have at hand. And as you can see, we are authorized for eight in 2016, and we had seven working. And then as the numbers go up, the blue line, total number of parcels worked and tasks, as you can see, we're at 2020, we had nine positions authorized, we had seven, and the line kept going up, which no one expected, but it did. And here we are, we now, we've authorized, you've authorized the board with resolution for 10 positions. Right now, we only have five people working. And of those, only three of those, actually, I would say, well, four are experienced, one is brand new. Came in as an entry level. But we're currently looking for people to hire. That's our situation. And I don't think I have another slide. Yes. I welcome any questions.
Have there been any instances where you rushed something through too quickly and there were problems later by not checks and balances?
Yes, it has happened. Not lately, but it has happened on occasion, yes. An easement that we missed, that does happen. And we have to go back and correct everything.
And you don't get to see us all at once like you do now. Is there anything that we can do to assist your department to make this quicker, better?
I think what we're asked for, that we put in the budget, was adequate for right now. As soon as we can get people up to speed and get them trained, we can't steal people from other counties because they're, you know, or other, like Gilbert or somewhere, because they're paying more, unfortunately. It's very hard to do that. So we're kind of stuck. I may be back here in two months or three and ask for two more staffers and see if we can, if that will help, depending on the flow and how much more subdivisions come in the door. But based on what I saw this last, this morning, I'm just shocked that it hasn't slowed down at all.
So Mary Ellen, you're no longer over Human Resources. Are we advertising out of state to some of the states that aren't booming like we are, where we could possibly get some to transfer here? where we could possibly get some to transfer here?
Chairman Miller, Supervisor Sirty, we certainly can do that. What has occurred in the very recent past is we just, the board approved last week the new position classifications for the GIS cartologists that represent the nature of the work and how the work is performed today. That was accomplished. We, we've been working with Mr. Wolf's office and budgets. So we have the funding to upgrade the current positions as well as the positions we're recruiting for. And all of that was just accomplished in the last week. So we will go out with recruitment, with new pay grades, with new job classifications, and with an effort to do a broad reach across the country.
Yeah, and I think the sooner the better, so.
Yes, sir.
I'm in total agreement.
Aren't, aren't there some folks in Saddle Brook that want to work?
We haven't been able to recruit them, Supervisor McClure. They, they're happily retired down there in Saddle Brook, except for a few of us.
Assistant Wolf, just real quick, and I don't know, this, this might be a little more difficult to answer. How, how do we compare to other counties? I mean, Maricopa County, of course, is, that's the state of Maricopa. So that's probably not a good comparator. But to Yavapai County, to Mojave County, or other counties out and about, staff-wise, now certainly, we seem to be in the vortex of, of development. I understand that, but how about staffing? How, how do we compare to other counties?
Well, Supervisor Miller, Chairman, you're right, we can't compare to Maricopa County. They didn't slow down at all last year, they kept their hiring pace up. Yavapai is experiencing the same problems we are, Pima to a lesser extent. But Pima has always spent money, whatever seems to be the condition down there. So I think it's, I mean, it sounds a cliche, but we are unique in the state because of where we are between the two metro areas. And I will give credit to the board and the prior boards. You set the table when you came on board, seven, six, seven years ago, for this to happen. And no one expected it to happen quite this dramatically. Nor did we expect federal policy to make dollars less than worth almost nothing. I mean, you borrow money at 2%, 1.5%. Anyone who knows anything about economics is, I got to put it into something that is going to get a yield. And real estate has always been a good go-to because it's a hard asset. So, and of course, COVID, again, mixed it up. So in comparison, I think we're in a unique situation because of our, the amount of growth that all the business investment has brought into the county.
Okay. Well, thank you for that explanation. And I have to agree with you, and most of that is, we are unique, right? Sitting sandwiched between these two metropolitan areas.
And I don't see, so Supervisor Miller, anyone else? Yes.
Supervisor, or yeah, Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. In the, in the delay process, is there a delay that starts with the recorder's office? Have you tracked how long something sits in the recorder's office before it comes to your office? Does that come into play?
Supervisor Kavanaugh, Chairman Miller, no. When they get recorded or within a couple of days, it comes to our office.
Okay, good.
That's very quick.
And, and I, on your charts, it's hard to, because you haven't been able to hire enough people. But how, how, do you track how long the, the process takes versus the old process versus the new process? How many hours or days you've taken out, or you can't quantify that yet?
Chairman Miller, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I'm not exactly sure what your question is. Is it the actual processing of a parcel, or is it?
Processing of a parcel. I, we have constituents that say it took extraordinarily, a long time. And so I'm wondering if you've quantified, hey, we can reduce it by X amount. Or can't you answer that yet?
I would be, I would be speaking out of school if I said I could answer that accurately at this point. As I said to earlier, generally what holds us up is the smaller developers have some problems with their legal description or surveys. The larger players here in the county, they have it wired when they walk in the door. It's ready to go as far as our office taking on the task.
You're good? Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Chairman Miller, the rest of the board, thank you for inviting me. And, you know, God bless America, we're booming here in Pinot County. So it's a good problem to have in a way. We could be in the other situations. Thank you very much for your time.
We love that capitalism.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're on a work session, and we have, now we have Mr. Volkmer, County Attorney Volkmer.
Chair members of the board, Kent Volkmer, County Attorney. This item, I ask to be placed on the work session calendar because it's odd. It's a little bit unique. And with the board's permission, what I'd like to do is explain the case that actually generated the need for this agenda item. Is that, is that okay, Chair?
Absolutely.
So I don't want to get into the details too, too goringly, so to speak. But what happened is there was a very young child, quite frankly, 14, maybe 15 years old, who perpetrated a crime against a child that was entrusted to him to babysit. And I believe that that girl was maybe 11 years old. The disclosure of that crime did not occur for about a decade. So now all of them are considerably older. Our local law enforcement agency did a full investigation. They came back, they interviewed the defendant in this case. And he fully admitted and said, yes, I, you know, I did this. It's been, again, almost a decade. This defendant or suspect has no criminal history whatsoever. He's never been in trouble. In fact, he's actually enrolled in the military. By all accounts, he's lived what looks to be an exemplary life, but we're unsure. But law enforcement submitted charges to my office. My office found itself in a very difficult position. Because if we bring these charges, we only have the ability to bring these charges as an adult. Meaning that this person is going to be a registered sex offender for the rest of their life. If they were convicted, they would spend potentially the rest of their life in prison. And it put us in a very difficult situation. Because from our office's perspective, our obligation is to do justice. It's not to seek vengeance, it's not to get a pound of flesh, it's to do what's right. And we found ourselves in a position where we said, look, if this person could do, for example, a risk assessment or a, a, some sort of assessment, psychosexual assessment, this is, look, this was obviously nothing we're ever going to contone or support. But if this was something done by a child that is no longer an issue, they pose no danger to our community, there's no risk. Bringing those charges, in my opinion, becomes not in the interest of justice. But we get in this issue where because the person is essentially a line person in the military, they don't have money. They don't have the 10 or 15 or $20,000 it potentially would cost to hire an attorney. So I went to Ms. Wayland, who's actually here, that may be able to answer any questions. And I said, Ms. Wayland, is there the ability that the public defender's office or indigent services could appoint this person an attorney for the limited purposes of us working with them, to see if this person needs to be charged? Because on the other hand, if they're not a danger, then I don't believe it's in the interest of justice to bring charges. But if they are, if they still have pedophilic urges, if they are a danger to our community, then I have an obligation to prosecute, I have an obligation to put this person on the sex offender registry so the community is at, is safe. And if they do nothing, then I have to err on the side of caution. Because ultimately, my obligation is to do what's in the best interest of the community. Community safety is first and foremost. So I would have to charge this person. We've already inquired, if we were charged, and subsequently, he did the investigation, or excuse me, he did the testing and it came back and said he's not a danger, and we dismissed. First off, he would lose his position in the military, he will automatically be expelled. The other thing that I can't undo is Google. He will be on Google for the rest of his life. If any employer ever searches his name, that's going to come up. If this had been brought forward when he was 14 or 15 years old, it would have been dealt with in the juvenile system. There would have been no record of this, he would have gotten treatment, and we would have moved on in life. So it's only because of this delayed disclosure. It's no fault of the victim, it's just a quirk that we find ourselves in. And currently, there's something called the enactment clause, and it's under 11584. That's what it's known as, is enactment clause. And that gives the public defender's office the scope and authority to represent indigent defendants. There is a provision that specifically says, and it is provision 10. And I'm just going to read it verbatim. "As attorneys in any other proceeding or circumstances in which a party is entitled to counsel as a matter of law, if the court appoints the public defender and the Board of Supervisors has advised the presiding judge of the county that the public defender is authorized to accept these appointments as specified." That's a bunch of legal mumble jumbo. What it really means is if this board gives the authority to our presiding judge to allow our, either public defender's office or indigent defense services to appoint representation. If that judge believes it's appropriate and gives them the authority, she then could appoint this young man, at this time, young adult representation. So what I'm actually here today requesting is that this board grant the authority to our presiding judge, who is Judge Rudy Jorgini, excuse me. We had already went previously to Judge McCarville. Judge McCarville indicated willingness to do it. Judge Jorgini just became our presiding judge. And after communication with him, he said, look, I'm not going to, my first action as presiding judge isn't going to be run afoul of the board. If the board gives me authority, I'm happy to sit down and have the conversation. But without that explicit authority of the board, I'm not going to do it because the statute is very clear that that authority must first come from the board. So again, I am here today asking this board. And this is set for a work session. I do have, or I have asked Ms. Wayland to be present if you have any specific questions for her. This is done in other counties. Maricopa County does it, Pima County, the larger counties do traditionally do it. It is very, very rare. I can tell you, I've been in office for over four and a half years. This is the first time it's come about. But we didn't have a mechanism in place to do what I think is ultimately the right thing to do. I will tell you, I spoke with my colleagues, those in, in this sort of industry, and they all sort of agreed that there are sex offenses that young adult, or excuse me, young children will commit that they sort of grow out of, for a lack of a better term. And just because they committed this offense as a 13, 14, 15, even a 16-year-old, it doesn't mean that they're a predator moving forward. My informal conversations is, this is the best process, is to have somebody appointed, to have somebody work with them, to have that person go get an assessment done. But again, we can't get there without this board's approval. And again, this isn't set for a, a specific approval item today. It is merely a discussion. I just wanted to present the board with this information. If the board has questions, I'm happy to answer. And then the intention is, in approximately two or three weeks, we'll bring back a formalized agenda item and ask for approval. And with that, are there any questions?
My question will be, so if we give that authority, is it on a case-by-case basis? Or is it, we give him that authority and you can utilize it anytime you feel it necessary?
So it would be, I mean, in theory, you could give it at one time. I would ask that you not do that if you're going to grant it, simply because every single case, I'd hate to come back and sort of describe the details about it. But this is the reality. That only becomes a viable avenue if I, as the prosecutor, identify this as somebody who we think should be appointed counsel. Because ordinarily, we don't reach out to people. I don't reach out to the public defender's office or public defense or defense counsel before we charge and say, hey, tell me what's going on before we make this charging decision. Normally, we get the police report, we make a charging decision. There are just those extraordinary cases sometimes that we see where there's additional information that really only the defendant can come up with. So it would only be really in the situation where I would go to Ms. Wayland, or I would go to the court and say, Your Honor, please appoint counsel in these limited circumstances. So I, I don't think it's something that the floodgates are going to go down. Again, I, it's my, you know, word to this board that, again, this is the first time that it's really ever come about. So I, again, I don't see it happening a lot. And quite frankly, the board could always take back that authority if they thought it were being abused. But I would ask that it be a little more general, because again, only the prosecutor can actually really initiate the process. I mean, in theory, Ms. Wayland and her office could initiate it, but they don't know cases before they get assigned to them, in part because of this enactment clause, because of the 11584, I believe. Hope that answers your question, Chair.
Well, it does, and some part of it, all it does is create me another question. So, so if Mr. Volkmer is no longer our county attorney, does it, does it convey over to the next guy? Maybe the next person's not as level-headed as you.
Chair, I would say that it does.
And I was going to ask, too, are there statutes of limitations on cases like this?
Some cases have statute of limitations, others do not. So murder, there are certain cases, sex offenses. The statute of limitations actually varies on the level of offense and the type of offense that's there. So this is one of those where there's not a statute of limitations issue at this point. It also has to do when the state became reasonably aware of the offense occurring, and it starts on us. Now, I will tell you, this case is getting close to probably nine months to a year old since it was first brought to our attention. So again, we've got law enforcement begging us, just make a decision. We've got the suspect or defendant in this case saying, guys, you've got me in limbo. If you're going to charge me, you know, I'm, I'm losing my career, just make a decision. And it's been a process to get there because we did try and make the most reasoned approach. But even, even being a year old, we still have considerable, considerable time to, to potentially bring charges.
Thanks. Sorry, I didn't go through the chair. Back to my question was?
Chair, I believe that unless this board somehow were to narrow it to say only for the next year or the next two years or something along those lines, I think once the board takes an action, that action is indefinite unless it has a specific termination point on it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Volkmer, for bringing this issue up. Under ARS 11584, under 11251, I'm going to ask you some questions.
Yes.
This person's in the military, and, and I believe they get free military legal counsel through the Military Assistance Office. Have, has the potential defendant explored that option?
Chair, Supervisor, we have done our best to express that to him. The problem is, I'm uncomfortable at this point having direct communication or having my office have any direct communication with him. Because we ultimately are seeking information that potentially could inculpate him. We want him to do that, and he's been made aware of that. But whether he has personally explored that, I cannot answer that question.
Okay. And does the public defender's office support this, this action that we're considering?
I cannot, sorry, Chair, Supervisor, I cannot say that the public defender's office either supports or doesn't. I would be shocked if they don't. I was actually going through Ms. Wayland. Originally, we did look at going through the public defender's office, but because of resources, the indigent defense counsel seemed to be the more appropriate avenue. Again, it's a very specific area. My understanding is Ms. Wayland is supportive of this. She did do public defense services in Maricopa County previously. This is a process that has been successfully utilized in the past. Sometimes it results in charges coming forward, sometimes it results in charges not coming forward. But again, she is present, and I would encourage you to ask her directly. But every communication I've had with her is, I believe she's supportive of this conceptually.
Okay. And would her office then screen the cases before they went to the presiding judge or before the presiding judge appoints counsel? It's kind of?
Chair, so under our system now, it used to be that the court's directly appointed counsel. Now it's actually Ms. Wayland's team that appoints. So it would go straight to her. I think she would first have to make that assessment that she believes that this would be an appropriate case. But again, I hate to speak for her, she is present. So I would ask, I would encourage you to ask her any direct questions, but that would be my understanding of the procedure.
Okay. So in this instance, would we be appointing counsel to a person who is not yet entitled to counsel by law because they've not been charged?
So there are some statutory, or excuse me, not statutory, there are case opinions that would suggest that this person may very well actually be entitled because of the level we're, we're at. There's a series of cases, and I apologize, I don't have them in front of me, where there becomes increasingly a blurred line, so to speak, when that person is legally entitled to counsel. Had this person been of sufficient means, it's unequivocal that they would have went and hired a private attorney. Anybody, you know, if this were my child, I would, without hesitation, hire a private attorney. I would have reached out to the county attorney's office, I would have taken those steps. It's only because this person frankly doesn't have any money. They are, growing up, they're associated economically disadvantaged. They're, again, they're an infantry-level person in the military. They don't have sufficient means. So I believe that they are legally entitled to counsel. I believe that there is a legal argument that, that Ms. Wayland could make or her team could make to establish legally that they're entitled to counsel, thereby making 11584 applicable.
Okay. I think, I think it's wise to do, but in a limited amount of time.
Would you like Ms. Wayland to come up? You want to ask her direct?
Yes, if you don't mind.
For the record, state your name and?
Catherine Wayland, Director of Public Defense Services.
Okay. Thank you. So how often, Ms. Wayland, has this type of case come up in your career?
Well, in Maricopa County, which is giant, of course, they typically have between 15 and 20 of these active at a time in that county. And, and the results vary, you know, as far as, I think that what Kent was saying about, I do, I think that the logic or the reasoning behind appointing counsel is that the case law that he's referencing is the Loeffler-Fry opinions that indicate that due process attaches at the time that a case is, is, that pleas, negotiations are occurring, or other types of resolutions are happening. And so if due process attaches when you're possibly resolving a case, then the right to counsel also attaches at that time. And that's the reasoning with which I think these cases move forward. And that's the reasoning with which I think these cases move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Any questions, comments? Okay. Well, this will be an agenda item in the future, I'm sure. Thank you. County Attorney? Chris Remus, Public Environmental Health Division.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Tasha Spears, Public Health. Forgot to put the S on my name there. I would like to introduce our Division Manager for Environmental Health, Chris Remus, who is the subject matter expert in reference to the Environmental Health Code. So he will be presenting today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tasha. Thank you, Chairman Miller, and members of the board for having me here. I'm Chris Remus, Division Manager for Environmental Health, which is part of the Penale County Public Health Services District. The reason we've brought this item to you today is because we are due to revise the Environmental Health Code. The last time this was brought before the board was in 2014, and it was approved and went into effect in 2015. Since 2015, the state has changed some of the laws that our code is based on, and so to a large extent, these changes that we would be recommending are obligatory to reflect state law. I'd also like to take the opportunity, since I haven't been before you in a while, to give a very brief discussion of what we do and why we do it, and where our authority comes from, so that you have that understanding going in. It's only about 12 slides, so it should be pretty quick.
Okay. A lot.
Okay, so the Penale County Public Health Community Vision is, as described there, more or less to give everyone, all county citizens and visitors, an opportunity to meet their full potential from a health perspective. Environmental health is part of the, is a division within public health, and we try to support our community in making healthy decisions and keep things safe with respect to the areas that we were involved in. Our regulatory authority is granted to us by the Arizona Department of Health Services and the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality through delegation agreement. So this is an agreement whereby the state has decided the counties, which is a division of state government, will take care of these certain issues, and they delegate that authority to the county. It provides us to have some limited local control over things. It allows us to tailor our codes to meet the needs of our citizens, provides us tools to gain resolution to problems. It authorizes us to recoup costs through permitting, but we cannot be less restrictive than state law or rule. So that's an important part of why we need to update our code to reflect state changes. We have to be at least as restrictive as state law allows us to be.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So you don't have to be less restrictive. Can you be more restrictive?
Yes. And that's why we have some local codes, and there are portions in the health code where we've added things where we were a little bit more restrictive, just because we, the board thought it was important, and we agreed, and we brought it before the board in the past. So for example, in 2014, when we brought this before the board, we added a provision for, we do inspections on public pools, and semi-public pools, for water quality, to ensure illnesses don't get spread through the water in the pool. But an inspector can't, in good conscience, go to a pool where the fence is falling down and just leave that alone. So we added a provision within our health code that says, you know, the gate and the barrier must be maintained to prevent unauthorized entry. So that's a little area, it's not for discussion today, it's already part of our code, we're not changing that portion. But that is an example where we, the board has decided that it's important that we at least look at something beyond what's state law, what's delegated to us.
See something, say something, right?
Yes, exactly. Any other questions regarding that?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you. So the Environmental Health Division within public health, we have a lot of different things that we do. We permit and inspect various facilities. Most of these are businesses within the county. That includes food service facilities, such as restaurants, daycare centers, school cafeterias, caterers, mobile food units, things like that. Motels and hotels, public schools, which includes charter schools, since they are publicly funded, does not include private parochial schools that do not have public funding. Mobile home and RV parks, campgrounds, swimming pools. We also do vector control within the county, which includes surveillance and abatement, but specifically for, with the purpose of reducing human disease. We're not an abatement program where the purpose is to get rid of all mosquitoes and kill them all, because everybody wants us to. But we do specifically do things to try to reduce incidence of human disease. We investigate citizen complaints, and a lot of those complaints would fall back to those permitted establishments that we inspect and have regulatory authority over. It includes things like foodborne illnesses, some of you might be aware of outbreaks that have occurred in the county in the past, we investigate those. We're kind of the field arm of public health when it comes to those types of things. Epidemiologists look at the human parts of the disease, we look at the environmental causes. It could be a foodborne illness, or food contamination issue, ill employees, things like that. We also investigate general sanitation, complaints at places like restaurants, and all of those different facilities that we inspect. Beyond that, we look at environmental health and public health nuisances, which are defined in state statute. So that goes from solid waste issues, such as people, you know, not discarding garbage that's on their property, liquid waste, such as sewage overflowing onto the ground, vermin issues, such as mosquito breeding, like a green pool, somebody has a green pool, they're not maintaining, and it's breeding mosquitoes that are affecting the entire neighborhood, things like that. Illegal dumping, our authority for illegal dumping is with respect to the trash needs to go to a landfill. We deal with the property owners, where the garbage or trash would be. We don't have any authority over actual act of dumping, which is criminal littering, that's more of a law enforcement issue. So when we deal with illegal dumping, we talk to the property owner about, "This is on your property, it needs to go to a landfill." And that's the extent of our authority there.
Quick question. So inspecting public schools as like just health and safety, I mean, that's what that is, because you said you don't do parochial schools or private schools, but you still, I mean, you inspect their cafeterias, you do all that, but you don't, but you, so what do you do at the private school, at the public school? You're just checking for, like, kids wiping their hands off?
The state health code, which is Title IX, Chapter Eight of the Administrative Code, has a section on public schools. And it's general sanitation, things like, do they have appropriate bathroom facilities for students? Can they wash their hands appropriately? Do they have the facilities for them to do it? Do they have enough bathroom facilities to meet the student enrollment, things like that? So that's, and beyond the cafeteria part, which we inspect separately. So we do the food establishment separately, and that would apply to both public and private schools. But the school grounds is specific to public schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, let me real quick ask a question while we're on this slide, to the swimming pools that you'd mentioned. Because years ago, there was a complaint, and the, I was told, "Well, we can't do anything down because it doesn't have any West Nile virus mosquitoes in it." But it was mosquitoes everywhere. Was that, I mean, is that something new, different? And what do you do when you have somebody that has a green pool? And how do we abate that?
Thank you for the question, Chairman Miller. There's two different types of pools we get involved with. One is semi-public and public schools, and, or pools, excuse me, and we are, we do general sanitation and water quality on those. Any pool, if it presents a public health nuisance, would fall under our authority. And so something like mosquito breeding would fall under our authority. And we would deal with a green residential swimming pool that was breeding mosquitoes with respect to ending the mosquito breeding. So if we went to a pool, we dip it, see if there's mosquito larvae in there. If there are, typically, what we've done is we will help them with a treatment the first time, and we will train them how to, what they need to do from then on, because we don't want to get in the business of pest control for somebody for their pool. But we certainly want to abate that nuisance immediately. So when we go out, there can be a pool that is very, very nasty and looks terrible, if it is not breeding mosquitoes, because they've added some chemical, for example, to prevent mosquito breeding, or the filter runs for a couple hours a day, which is enough to disturb mosquitoes, so they couldn't breed in that pool and emerge. We would then not do any treatment. We can't force them to make the pool nice, we can only make sure it doesn't breed mosquitoes. So that's probably, I think, the situation.
Okay, well, thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions on that?
Question?
Okay, so part of this code revision process, the state, I didn't include the state portion of this here, but the state has already gone through the public meeting process, the stakeholder process. I was involved in those stakeholder meetings as the county representative. There was, industry was there, included the Arizona Restaurant Association, various other associations that deal with the items in code that were being changed. So the state has gone through that whole public notification and public input process before we even start. So after that all occurs, the state then, the Secretary of State publishes the Arizona Administrative Code revisions, and that was done in September of 2020. So once we see that there were changes with the state code that we want to be consistent with, because we'll need to follow it anyway, because we're delegated the state code, we develop a draft revision of the Environmental Health Code in early 2021. We did a, we notified the public that we were going to have a stakeholders' meeting in early June. We did have a stakeholders' meeting in July. All the feedback that we received was positive, we didn't receive any negative feedback with these changes. We developed our final draft of the code after that stakeholders' meeting. The only changes were typographical. And so now we're at the step of the work session to let you know what's going on and what our intentions would be, and to gain any direction from the board. And then the next step, if so directed, would be a board of supervisors meeting with revision to the health code. Now I'm going to go just quickly through the areas that we did change. So the Environmental Health Code substantive or significant changes to the code have occurred in a few chapters. One is in Chapter One, which is our general provisions. That includes things like how we issue permits, what our permits mean, and how much they cost. There are no fee changes, however. That would have been a separate process, this does not include any fee changes at all. How our permits are defined, things like that. So part of that was important because of the changes to other chapters. And part of it was just to clarify some things for staff and for working, and make it easier for our business operators to understand what we do and to get their permits and so on. I'll go into it in a little more detail later. Chapter Two, which is for food establishments, the state adopted the 2017 food code, so we're going to get up to date with that. Chapter Four, which relates to recreational vehicles and parks. Chapter Six for campgrounds and children's camps. And Chapter Seven for lodging establishments, which is like hotels and motels. There were other non-substantive changes in the code if we saw a typographical error or something like that that we wanted to fix, but they had no real significance with respect to what we do. So in Chapter One, the general provisions, as I stated, there are no fee changes, but we did change our permitting structure. To some extent, we're recommending a change to our permitting structure. One, to make it easier for applicants. We kind of have a dated permitting structure right now, where there's a lot of redundancy between what different permits are and what people do. We really wanted to simplify that to make it easier for, for example, for our restaurant operators to know what permit they're applying for. It also allows staff to more easily monitor and determine what various establishments are allowed to do. An example would be like a food caterer, like a restaurant that also caters meals. Catering is considered high risk from a food safety perspective, because they're taking that food that they make at that kitchen, they have these added steps to transport it and then serve it off-site, keep it at temperature, all of those things. Right now, it's very hard to keep track of which restaurants are also doing catering, which ones aren't doing catering. We don't require an extra permit for that. Some counties do, they give multiple permits and fees to a restaurant. We try not to do that. So we like to keep it as simple as possible. It does create a challenge for keeping track of things. So these changes that we've recommended in the code will help us to keep track of what various establishments are doing and want to do, and what they're approved to do, so that when we go in and do another inspection, if there's a change, it's very easy to tell, "Well, this changed, let's talk about it, figure out what's going on." We updated it to reflect some categories that are required by the food code, such as, we have risk categories, or priority categories, for our food establishments, that determines how often they're inspected a year. And typically, traditionally, going back 50 years in the state, every place got inspected twice a year, and that was just it. But really, there are some places that have higher risk, and some places that have lower risk. So the code allows us, and requires now that the state updated their code, that some establishments can be inspected once a year, like a convenience store that just has hot dogs on rollers, or something like that. Whereas another establishment that might be a nursing home that's dealing with highly susceptible populations, or a hospital, or a daycare center, they get four inspections a year. So one of the changes we're recommending is to create that fourth category for those highly susceptible populations and such, in accordance with state law. We don't currently have that. We want to create consistency with national standards, as I stated, Arizona law, state licensure. Those national standards really only comes into play as the food code is a national standard, and the state already adopted it. So like I said, it's kind of obligatory that we adopt it as well. There's not a ton of changes really in there either, just some minor stuff. And then also, the state adopted some specific mobile food establishment rules a couple years ago, went into effect in late 2018, that once again allowed a little easier for mobile food establishments to get permits in different counties. So if a mobile food establishment is permitted in one county in Arizona, and their base of operations is in that county, which we call a commissary, that's where they get their permit, and state law now allows it for, much easier for other counties to just give them a permit based on what's done in their home county. So this brings our code up to speed with those changes, which would be called state licensure. I will say that since that went into effect, we've had to do it anyway, and we've gained two, we went from about 100 mobile food establishments in the county to well over 200. Once again, due to the unique nature of Penale County, being sandwiched between Maricopa and Pima Counties, the two urban centers of the state, pretty much anybody who wants to do mobile food in those counties is interested in coming into Penale County once in a while, and this greatly eases their ability to gain a permit from us from a food safety perspective.
So, quick question.
Sure.
So are the mobile food establishments, I mean, they're based out of some, I mean, I understand that, out of some building, you know, someplace. So are the codes for the food trucks essentially, are they the same in each county, pretty much?
Yes. This, part of the changes that the state made to the food code was to... Yes, this part of the changes that the state made to the food code was to adopt specific rules to for mobile food to make it consistent between counties because counties like us would have a hard time before. We'd have to make if somebody been operating, for example, in Pima County or Maricopa County for 20 years, that's where their base of operations was and so on, the old rules would have required that they start from scratch with us, create a base of operations in Pinal County to work out of in a lot of cases. Or or, you know, require us to trust those other counties, which we generally did. But they have a much more rigorous and and not as timely permitting process. They they'd have to start from scratch to come into Pinal County and do business. And so this now allows them to basically if they prove to us that they have a permit in another Arizona county and they have a commissary in that county, we can just issue them the permit without inspection. And the rules are consistent between those counties.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's made things great. I I think that's that affected our county more than any other county I can state, you know, without any doubt. I'm I'm in meetings with all of them. Yeah, we're growing rapidly. We're situated between those urban centers. It's been a great help to us. It's also decreased the number of, you know, temporary food booths that we have to inspect at various events because there's just more opportunity for businesses to come in and easily work at those events. It's easier for the county. We don't have to go inspect every single one of them every time. And it's easier for the event coordinators because they they have a lot of people readily available that they can then go and get to work at their event. And then the other change to Chapter One is we kind of clarified which permits pertain to pertain to which situation. So we know what questions we get from our operators about, well, what permit do I need for this or what permit do I need for that? So we tried to just clarify that within code to make it easier. Any questions about Chapter One?
Well, I guess I'm gonna go ahead and ask this question right now. It's it's probably broad to the entire process here. I think the last time we changed the code, after we started doing inspections, I was inundated by phone calls from everybody that's or a lot of people that were in the industry saying they didn't know about the changes. I I guess my question really is, how do we communicate all these changes to the people that need to know about the changes? I mean.
Well, we we've certainly already started talking to operators when we do inspections for it. I imagine there would be press releases and such associated with with the new code adoption. Frankly, these these laws have have already gone into effect at the state level, so the changes have been made. And they did have input at that time. So for example, one of the changes that was made as the state went through its process, there's not a lot of differences, for example, in the food code between the version we had adopted, which was 2013 to 2017. The state went back as far as 1999 before they adopted 2017. So the change from for us from 2013 code to 2017 code is really relatively.
A little more gradual.
Whereas this at the state level, it was a much greater change. I think the changes in the 2017 food code are they they're required to have a vomitus and diarrhea plan in a restaurant that if somebody pukes, they need a a plan at how they're going to deal with that rather than, oh, my gosh, what do we do? And it requires a food manager to be on staff when they're open. But the state, when it went through the process and with input from the Arizona Restaurant Association stuff, already put a timeline in their rules for that to go into effect. They gave 10 years from adoption. So we would be adopting that by reference because that was the most significant change and that was probably the hardest thing for operators to gain staff that have that training. So it's being adopted. That's coming into play gradually.
Well, I think and I well, I think this would be a a great task to have James Daniels really kind of get that message out as we go forward here.
Yeah, I agree.
Because there's still there's always those little pockets. There's always those small mom and pop operations that, oh, I didn't know that. I didn't know we were supposed to be doing this. So anyway, and it's.
Yeah, we will certainly make every effort to to be clear and loud and let people know. And I appreciate you asking that question Supervisor Miller. It's important.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I need to slow everything down.
Okay, and then the, like I said, we have a specific code because we have a couple things in addition to the state. And last time, and traditionally in Pinal County, we've always had rating cards for our food establishments. The public likes them. So that's a part that's specific to Pinal County. That's not changing. That's staying exactly the same. And requiring a basic level food handler testing, which also the public supports, you know, and it's really helpful that, you know, if you think about a 16-year-old getting their first job in a food establishment, it's nice that they have at least a one-hour training about food safety before they're, you know, feeding everybody. So. Any any questions? So the next chapter that was changing, and this is a little bit more of a substantive change, is with recreational vehicles and parks. And at the when the state went through and changed the Arizona Administrative Code, it was quite dated previously. What these change, the decision was made to focus on itinerant types of establishments where people are coming and going rather than mobile homes, which are which are built to HUD standards and basically stay in place forever. Now, you know, these old mobile homes from the 1930s that people thought wouldn't last that are still in place, you know, those are still a concern. But we can still look at those on a complaint basis if they've got sewage issues or something like that at a mobile home park. But the state code has now been changed to clearly reflect that the authority is with respect to itinerant issues like RVs that come and go, plug into the sewage disposal system, dump sewage in the in the facility, plug into water and so on. So what this will do is we're looking at adopting those state rules by reference and it's going to change our focus to focus on those itinerant establishments as the state changed rather than mobile home communities. And so it's going to actually reduce the number of permits that we inspect probably to some extent. So and we, you know, some of these parks that are things like park models or, you know, like Montessa in Gold Canyon, that, you know, they're almost homes. We 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 wouldn't inspect those parts anymore. And really, we were kind of spinning our wheels anyway, doing those inspections. Any questions on Chapter Four? Chapter Six, which is campgrounds and children's camps, it adopts actually two sections of state code that in our code are included in one chapter. We just adopt those by reference. One of the changes that's in there was actually part of Pinal County's legislative agenda a few years ago, which was to recognize primitive campgrounds, if any, any of you remember. So that's gonna we're just gonna adopt those rules by reference. So we actually instituted and asked for that change and that was part of what the state put in place when they did the campgrounds. And then lodging establishments, once again, most of the changes here aren't substantive as far as what they need to do. It just updates verbiage with modern terminology. You know, we inspect rooms, make sure they don't have things like bed bugs, make sure they actually wash dishware. You know, you ever, a lot of people don't think about it, but what happened to that coffee pot before you got the room? That's the type of stuff that that we look at. So and that's staying consistent. There's not a whole lot of changes there. And that's basically it. So the next step would be to bring, unless we're directed to change something or do something different, would be to bring this to a public board meeting for adoption. So but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Yes.
You have a question? Go ahead.
Is there a provision in the Arizona statutes that requires that we adopt their language verbatim?
It's in our delegation agreement. They specifically delegate the county, the provisions in the Arizona Administrative Code.
Okay.
So it's a yes, it's very specific.
And and then in terms of we we charge fees and at some point we establish the fees, have you have you looked at those lately to see if they're appropriate?
We we have not lately because it when you adopt fees, it's a more rigorous process to make changes. So we wanted to separate that process out from the code changes. If we, when we look at fees, which is probably something that would be a good idea, you know, in the next few years, we'd like to, one, have our permit structure in place, which this does, so that it's easy to know. Having this permit structure in place for a little while will allow us to determine to do a fee study that's in line with our permits, which is required. And it would, the the public notification, the number of meetings we need to have and so on, is significantly more rigorous for a fee change, so we separate that process out. What I will say is philosophically, and I believe Tasha's right in line with this. We've talked about it before, so please tell me if I'm wrong. At the board, we are a public health services district, which means we have a tax base, which is which is out of sales tax, and we represent the public. My personal philosophy is that our permit fees should never be more than 49% of what it costs because, you know, they always say, follow the money to see who's important. We represent the public. And so since they are, there already is a tax structure in place, you know, my philosophy is that our permit fees shouldn't be more than 49%. That's just me. I believe other people are in line with that. There are counties that have 100% fee recovery, where the permit fees reflect the total cost of doing business. And I will just say, based on experience, the statement is true, you know, if you follow the money, you know who you serve, you know.
Obviously, you've thought about that because I think the and and we do these fee studies periodically for all the different departments and things. And and a big deal is that we do kind of get an idea of what it really does cost. And I don't want to charge more than what it costs. Sometimes we want to recoup. I appreciate your thought.
So going but going back to the question of of ARS delegates to us, we are able to change the code. We don't have to adopt it verbatim. We can change it and tailor it more to the needs of Pinal County. Isn't that true?
As long as it's more restrictive. We would have more regulations than the state in that case. We can't be less restrictive than what we're delegated.
Okay.
Thank you for that question.
Unlike there are other, there are codes that you can adopt, like the building code. There's sometimes you can do some amendments there. This one you cannot. We have to go more restrictive.
Yes.
And in terms of the training for food service workers, do we provide that or is that all outsourced? And do they, what is the fee that they pay for that?
It's the county is not in the business of doing that. We do, we we used to be. But there are plenty of private opportunities for people to gain that training. And the last time I looked, it was as cheap as $6. And I will admit, I haven't looked for a few years, but we don't hear complaints about about what it costs people there. ANSI, which is the American National Standards Institute, certifies that that the food service worker training tests meet a certain standard. And there are various private companies that provide that training. So what we do is just make sure that, you know, food staff has training from a an accredited body. And it's as cheap as $6.
And you can do it online.
Yes, yeah, yeah. They have, they, last time I looked, I think there were 14 different options or something like that.
Right. There's, yeah.
They can honestly, they can do it better than we can.
Right.
So there's no reason, you know, in my opinion, for the county to to take that on.
Okay. And my final question is, I noticed that under regulation for the plans, it says, no construction, alteration, or addition be made in accordance with except in accordance with approved plans and specifications. The owner, operator, or his authorized agent shall certify in writing if the planned documentations comply with these regulations. I spoke with Lester Chow and I said, we sort of have, we have planning and zoning, you know, working with the potential builder on the restaurant, but then we have another layer in that same operation, the health department approving plans, and I'm sure that's for sanitation purposes. I would like to see those two melt melted together so that the so that the citizen who's trying to get a permit and a restaurant approved sort of has a one-stop shop. And I think that's the theme of Pinal County, making things easier for for our customers, our citizens. And so that's just a comment, you know, that might be something we can work on in the future.
I appreciate that question Supervisor Kavanaugh, and thank you for allowing me to address it Supervisor Miller. The issue is that doing the specific part that pertains to restaurants requires specific training and certification. It requires that you be a registered sanitarian to approve a restaurant. Since state law went to effect requiring sanitarians to do that, which was in the 1960s, I think the total number that have been registered in the state is 1,000 little or maybe 1,200, 1,300. There are not a lot of us that meet that level of certification to do those plans. So if we were to try to, I don't think the building departments have the expertise to do things like look at food flow in a restaurant to determine, you know, how much space do you need with refrigerators based on what you want to make? It would be a huge training burden for them to have cross-training to do it. And frankly, we don't have any expertise in the building codes. We leave the plumbing and building part to the experts for that part.
But they but in the process, they could say, this item goes over the health department. The what I'm saying is the citizens have would have one application. That's something I would just encourage us to look at. So you still do your job, they still do their job, but there's not an entire another set of processes and forms with respect to the building. That's what my recommendation would be.
Okay, yeah, I thank you very much for that comment. And it's certainly something that can be taken under consideration. State law does require what we ask on our permit, but I'm sure something could probably be arranged to that effect if.
Well, I think to to your comments Supervisor Kavanaugh, when I was in the building business and I did do some restaurant work, we if if, I mean, it's obvious, okay, it's a restaurant or it's a food serving type of operation. I turn in my building permits, but I also then turned in a set of plans for the health department, which I gave them the specs of the refrigerator, the stoves, the all the all the equipment and along with. So in other words, if you're going to do a, if you are going to do a restaurant, you are going to give them an extra set of plans so that they can, those processes can parallel through the approval process. So when you get to the permit, typically, the public health has had an opportunity to look at it at the same time, at least in my past. I have to say, generally, those things have always worked out because you just submit it all. And if you didn't have the specific equipment, when you turned in the building for the building permit, you were able to bring in at a later date the rest of the information for the health department.
Is that the way it works now?
Yes, we, yes. Thank you Supervisor Miller for pointing that out. And right now, we have a very close relationship with building safety, for example. So when they get building safety permits, there's a process in place as part of their workflow where we take a look and determine, is this something that we need to talk to the people as well? I would say it's the national standard that separate plans come because we have very different interests than building safety with respect to what we do. And and not to get in the weeds, but we have to look at things like, are they, you know, retorting foods and like putting it into a jar to make it shelf-stable, requires very specialized equipment and things like that, and a very specialized certification process? They have to go to universities and get tests and all all kinds of things like that. So but not to get off base, we have a close relationship both with Pinal County Building Safety. We're intimately involved in that process, being one one county. But we also work closely with the various cities. And, you know, I don't like we we had a case where somebody was doing some very strange plumbing and they submitted plans to us where that required a lift station because they wanted to put the plumbing through the ceiling. Really, it's like, why? You know, so we contact, I think it was Casa Grande or Maricopa, and, you know, we talked to the building inspectors and plumbing inspectors there and say, do you know this is going on? And they go, oh, no, we didn't know. Thank you very much for pointing that out. Thank you very much for pointing that out. And then they take care of their end. But it, it can get rather complex, and I know that's, for the layman, it, it can be challenging. But what I will say is, for the restaurant industry, it's the norm to submit building safety and, and health department separately.
And one last question. Did you have an opportunity to review this presentation with any other Board of Supervisors member prior to today?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Not beyond sending it to the clerk.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, so, I guess the last thing would be board direction. Would you like us to bring this before for change?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll put it on, on a future agenda.
Okay.
You know, get with, get with the clerk.
Okay, great.
And the board, and, and, I, we, we've done this in the past. We have to update, and we have to do, we have to parallel what the state's doing, so it's a pretty normal process.
Yes.
Like I said, get the message out to the, the actual users is, is always been the Chris, a critical part of this.
Yeah, and there certainly will be questions.
Sure.
They always come up. And I, I thank you very much for your questions. They're very insightful, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you.
Well done.
Thanks for your presentation.
Don't worry about that.
It's, it's sanitary.
Work session on case PZA, PA zero-zero-two-dash-two-one. What do we got going?
Chair, Vice Chair, Board, Gilbert O'Geehan. Good morning, technically. So now we get to the exciting stuff, the comprehensive plan, major comprehensive plan amendments.
This is the exciting stuff.
Yes, sir. Planners live for this type of thing. I'll be stepping in this morning. Steve is, is working on some other meetings that we got going on due to the level of, as mentioned earlier, we're very busy. Development is not slowed down at all.
Better than the alternative.
So I'm gonna just briefly talk to you about the schedule that we have in place. There's been a couple of minor changes towards the end, but this shows you, you know, the days that the applicants had to submit for the, for the applications. We've, everything has gone smoothly. There's been no issues. The applicants, the applicants brought in their applications. They were sent out to the agencies per, per statute and per the code. We had our, our, our work session, our, our county initiation as required, and then we had a work session with P and Z. We had no major issues with the four applications that were submitted. They're for solar projects that are coming to the county. There was one that was filed by state land that has been withdrawn, per state land. So that was the fifth one. That one's no longer gonna be discussed. It's been withdrawn. There is a tax amendment that is still, still moving forward, so we'll discuss that one as well. August eleventh is the work session amongst the board, so.
I'm sorry. Where's the one that got removed from state land, you know?
Can you see that, or, or is it on the screen?
Hello, yes. If I look at my screen.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Look to the left.
So it's the last one of the, of the five cases that we had. It was Arizona State Land Department with the twelve-thousand-plus acres that was within proximity to Gold Canyon. I'm sure you all got a chance to read the letters that were coming to staff and to the board members. So once again, that's been withdrawn by the applicant. We have a letter that was given to us by them, so that one's gonna be pulled off of our schedule. But that did trigger a tax amendment, and that will continue to move forward. And as mentioned, all five cases, all four cases are, are specific to solar projects, where essentially you have a major comprehensive plan amendment to designate land for green energy, and then bring it to the rezon where you turn it into industrial, and then we put a planned area development over it, overlay to protect it, and make it specific to that type of use, which is solar. So if I may, I will start with the first one. We call this one Box Canyon. The proposal by Arizona State Land, and this is for the Box Canyon solar project. Eric Ellis with Bright Night, he is here today. Now, this is not a public hearing, so the public is not to speak unless they are called out by the, by the board. But he is here requesting approval of a major comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate two thousand three hundred twenty-nine acres from high-density activity center, moderate-low-density residential, and major open space to green energy production. It's two thousand-plus acres, as mentioned, and it's located approximately four-point-six miles east of the Salt River Project, April Station, nine miles north of Florence, five-point-six miles south of State Route sixty, and directly adjacent to and west of SR seventy-nine. So it's right outside of Florence going north.
The yellow signs on the side of the road?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Owner is Arizona State Land, and I did mention the applicant. This gives you perspective as to where it's at. Like, once again, it's directly just outside of Florence, and it's right north of the, of the military reservation that we have there as well. This gives you a better perspective of the actual comprehensive plan and what it looks like. That red dot indicates high-intensity activity center, but around it is mostly vacant land. There is a couple entitled projects around it, but per the comprehensive plan, as mentioned earlier, it is a minor, it is MLDR, which allows one to three-point-five dwelling units per acre, and they want to change it to green energy, which would allow the solar. This is, shows you the zoning of the project. Currently, the zoning for the project is GR. And those are the two, you see the two squares that are directly to the side of it, the yellow and the white, that shows you some entitled property that is there today, private land. Here's an aerial map that gives you a little more perspective as to what's out there, and honestly, not much. It's mostly vacant property. So as mentioned, it's a, it's a hundred percent owned by state land. It's pretty much flat. They are proposing to do three-hundred-megawatt photovoltaic solar energy. It includes solar arrays that will move with movement of the sun. It's also gonna be a battery energy storage system, reserved space for future commercial. There was, because there was a corridor that existed, I should say, around the dot that we call it, they did leave a nice corridor there if that area was to have a development in commercial. Not likely, but it was planned, I would say, twenty years ago, that there was a possible free corridor, north-south corridor, that was gonna penetrate the area, and it, it has not. And that alignment's changed, so it's kind of, it's, it's.
A question?
So they're also working to, to try to protect the wildlife in the area and not impact it as much. As you know, the solar projects are temporary type of use. They usually go away after thirty years, thirty-five years is the most. They're right, they, they are looking at a possible building on-site for those that are working on the site, like a maintenance building, but they haven't decided that yet. It will be concluded and finalized at the zoning level, which will be next, and all the associated infrastructure that will happen. So timing of this project is two thousand twenty-four. That's when they figure it will end. But they're looking at possibly about a year, year and a half before it gets going, gets moving.
Could I ask you a question on that?
Yes, sir.
So it says, the solar arrays are gonna, the, the tippy ones, are they, are they portrait? Are they landscape? Are they one or two panels tall? Do you know?
I do not. That's a great question, so.
That affects the height. So I'm, you know, like, what you're gonna see when you're driving out there.
Right, they are going to provide a fence to kind of hide them from seeing, because the other thing we have is regards to concern with this one, is because of where it's at, it parallels a state route. So it would be, I, I, as a planner, would think it'd be detrimental to just have, you see in the top of these shiny little arrays all up and down. So they are providing some type of fencing material. We're gonna ask them to also be up the landscaping on that side to help mitigate that type of issue. But I will get with the applicant and get you an answer in regards to what type.
Because even, I'm sorry, even with your fencing, I know one, this goes back maybe a year and a half or so before I was on the board, but the fence is like six feet tall. And if you do a double-panel portrait, then the panels are like fifteen feet tall and they're straight up, so you're not blocking anything with the fence. All you're doing is keeping out some of the kids from going in there and spray painting. I mean, maybe.
Right. No, that's a great point. I didn't read in the narrative that it had, that in regards to just being the type of array that follows, but I'll definitely get an answer for you on that one.
Thank you.
Great, great question. Anybody else have any questions or concerns, comments?
One other thing I have, too, is I, I get told about a lot of these projects, because I see the pre-apps come across, and, and I get told by the applicant or representation for the applicant, that, oh, you know, this is great because it's, you know, you know, it's low water use. Well, how much water do these things use to clean them? I mean, who, how do, how do they clean these things? It's a dusty area, so, you know, we're talking about water, the big picture. So how much water do these use?
So in regards to how much water, what have they done, and, because I've worked on several of these here in the county and in other jurisdictions, is they bring in a water truck. So they typically go to a source, collect the water in a water truck, bring it over, and then from there, they, and it's usually twice a year that they have to wash the panels off, because they collect dust.
Right.
Is, this one, they hadn't talked about having an actual water source, which is why they want to do a building for, for the people that are gonna be maintenance, see those, those panels. But they, we could ask the applicant and get you an answer on that. I don't think they're gonna have a water source. They haven't talked about that. It's more infrastructure, it's state land, so there's no well that we're aware of either. But most of them, they just have a water truck, and they just spray out the panels twice a year.
This is a curiosity question.
No, that's a great question. Thank you.
Are they fifteen feet tall? I thought they were lower.
Two, two panels, you know, when they put them up there, because those panels are like, I don't know, like, four feet, five feet tall, something like that. But by the time you put two of those together and you spin them around, when they're, you know, when they're straight out, I mean, not when they're.
Yeah, most of the ones they've had a chance to work on are typically six to seven, so they, they're parallel with the fence line.
I see, I see.
We'll let the, we'll let the applicant, go ahead and finish your presentation.
Thank you, though, sorry.
No, that's a great question.
We'll, we'll bring the applicant up.
Okay. Well, that concludes my presentation, sir.
There you go.
All right.
Court, did you want to respond to that?
Sure. Chairman Supervisor is Court Rich from the Rose Law Group, on behalf of the applicant. And the applicant, Eric Ellis, is here as well. They can answer some of the technical stuff, but I thought, just because we're here and you're asking those questions, we might as well answer them for you now. And maybe I'll call Eric up here to answer. I know on the, on the water use, generally speaking, they, you know, the dust is fine. They can work with dust on them. The rain, naturally, you know, they're tilting when it rains, it runs off, so there's really not, you know, a lot of water use associated with these. On the height, maybe Eric can just correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding on these is it's gonna be six to twelve feet?
That's right.
That's right. Okay, so that's the, that's the height that we're looking at. We think for this one in particular, the location, you know, there's no residential around it, there's no, you know, there's nothing around it at all. And, and as to the, you know, shininess or lack thereof, these are not like the mirrors that you may see, you know, there's a, on the way to San Diego on I-8, there's a different technology that's very, very shiny. You know, these are, are designed to absorb light, not reflect them, so we don't think there's gonna be an issue with, you know, reflectivity or anything like that with these. But happy to answer any more specifics and can get the, the developer up here to talk more about it, but wanted to, didn't want to miss this opportunity to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Are you good?
Thanks.
Okay, so one question, and reflectivity. So some of the new, the new panels are, and this is off maybe a little bit, but some of the panels are shiny and some are now matte finish.
Mm-hmm.
Would this be the?
Just out of, I'm, I'm curious. Let's try and do it.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they're designed to absorb. Well, yeah, when, yeah, please come before the microphone and identify yourself, and then. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Good morning. Eric Ellis with Bright Night Energy. I'm the, I lead product development for Southwest. And so if the question is about, are, are the panels shiny? I mean, they're, they're generally designed to be, to be absorbing panels, and they, if the angle hits it just right, potentially, there could be some reflectivity, but for the most part, we, these projects are built all the time, and for example, in proximity to military bases, and, and, you know, we've, we've never run into situations where, where glare or reflectivity has been an issue for those facilities. So for the general public consumption, yeah, we're not thinking that's gonna be a, a material issue for anyone. And you see, you see them all the time in neighborhoods.
We're at the comprehensive plan level right now, so.
That's right.
Okay.
With other questions we could ask for you this morning?
I guess that's it.
No, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Chairman, if I may, a lot of the details we're asking about are gonna be brought up and talked about at the zoning level.
Exactly.
Standards, so. But they're great questions. Thank you.
So brings us to item number six. Is it okay to, you up? Anything else, Gilbert, on that one?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Item number six. PZPA zero-zero-three dash-two-one.
Good morning, Chairman Vice Chair, is not present today, and other board members. Sangita Deuker presenting this case, PZPA zero-zero-three dash-twenty-one. This is the second solar project that we have in our major comprehensive plan amendments. This proposal is, is a Sonic Solar Project LLC proposing a major comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate eighteen-eighty-two acres from medium-low-density residential to green energy production and a major open space. The area, sorry. The area, as mentioned, is eighteen-eighty-two acres. Location is southwest of the city of Eloy. The owner is Arnaldo Burrell, and the applicant is Benjamin Conor Branch, Sonic Solar Project LLC. This map shows the location of the project. One can see that it's in the southern portion, south of, southwest of the Eloy. This map shows the comprehensive plan land use designation, and one can see that multiple parcels are involved in this. The land use designation being MLDR, one to three-point-five dwelling units per acre, and that's the whole portion which has been proposed for the green energy production with, and the major open space. This map shows the existing zoning. It has multiple zoning categories, CB1, CB2, CR3, 2. It also has CI1. This is the aerial picture, again, showing the land, which is agricultural land, pretty much weakened, and really, nothing present at this point. There's some development at the southern portion of, of this huge area. This map shows the, the flood map. This is, and, this is important in terms of how the portion on the northeast side of the, of this whole project is going to be designated for open space, which aligns with our Pennell County major open space plan, which is existing and the proposed. The next two maps will show that, too, that aligns with this watershed boundaries. So these are the existing connectivity zones, and one can see the location of this project and the northeast portion that is also part, the parcel is part of that, but it would be part of the open space that would be proposed. So this gives you an idea of what I was talking about, the existing major open space, the dark green. The light green is proposed planned open space, and one can see that this almost kind of fits into that triangular portion with, which has the major, the proposed open spaces on the northeast and the west portion of this whole large project. The proposed land use, as shown in the yellow portion, is going to be for the green energy production, and one can see that the Shampford parcel on the right, I'm sorry, on the right, right northeast portion is going to be designated as a partial open space that aligns with the, with the county open space. This is a conceptual site plan that shows, why is that happening? I'm so sorry. Just jumped to that. I'm sorry about that. This is a conceptual site plan that shows the layout of. Conceptual site plan that's showing the, the way the layout of those solar panels and arrays would be there, that would be connected to the transmission lines, and it is very much at a conceptual stage, and there will be definitely much more changes. That would be expected moving forward as the plans are detailed out. The current conditions for this site is eighty-five percent of it is irrigated farmland with large, flat topography, no. No critical native habitats have been identified and it has no impacts to endangered species. The proposal is a solar generation of 137.5 megawatt of battery storage to include the standard elements of our solar farm with solar array of PV modules, single axis tracking, battery energy storage system, the operations and maintenance building, associated infrastructure. The timing of this development is to, to meet commercial operation dates for end of 2025. And I'm open to questions. We also have the applicant at this point for any specific questions from the board.
Any questions on this study session? Thank you. Brings to item number seven. Brian Herskey. There you go, Brian.
Hello. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board Members. Brian Herskey, now reading for PZ-PA dash 004 dash 21. This is for another solar project. N Value LLC is proposing a major comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate 1667 acres from medium-low density residential, medium-density, high-density to, to green energy production. Yeah, like I was saying, it's 1600 acres. This one's just southwest of Arizona City. The, the Arizona, the owner should be Arizona C LLC and the applicant's Randy Schroder from N Value. Here's that location just south of, of Arizona City. And here's, here's kind of a map. You can kind of see towards the, the north and the east, like it directly abuts the, the Arizona City project. And you can see all the different land designations that they got going on there with, with the, the high-density, medium-density and the, the medium-low density residential. As well as the, the general commercial, all going onto, to green energy production. You'll see, you'll see down to the, to the south, that's the, the city of Eloy and their, their jurisdiction. And here's a better look at some of the zoning that we got going on. That portion towards the north is all zone GR. And then towards the south, you have a mix of RVP and MH as it's currently zoned. And this is all gets switched over to I-3 with a, with a planned area development over top. Here's the aerial and you can definitely see all the, all the roads and all the houses directly to the north and to the east with the Arizona City Lake and whatnot. Here's definitely their, their regional perspective as far as utilities. You can see the, the large transmission lines crossing at that project. Here's a little more zoomed in. You can kind of see how it goes and follows Milligan Road. And then there's, there's some that come from the southeast. Here's their conceptual site plan. Where you can see they have a small building towards the, the west side. And they leave space for those transmission lines and then all the panels that go in, into the rest of the spot. Current condition, the site's pretty flat and so wouldn't require a whole lot of grading. There's not a whole, there's no native impacts to the wildlife or anything like that. There's existing transmission lines to connect to the electrical grid. This guy's going to be 275 watt, megawatts of solar energy. Where they're going to include the photovoltaic modules following the sun. They have the collection systems with inverters, transformers and, and the batteries. It's also going to include the maintenance building and site substation along with any associated infrastructure. And then it's supposed to start at the end of 2024. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Brian?
Thank you. There's a number of land uses in this area and, and there's residential growth. It looks like, if I'm looking at one. There we go. So I know we'll notice the public, but what prevents this from growing north or south? Does this company own the property or?
Yeah, these, these are all private individuals who own, own the land.
Okay.
As, as far as the, the north, it's, it's set up and already plotted to be homes. You can see all the roadways to the, to the north. Not too much farther to the west is going to be the, one of the Native American lands. I'm not sure exactly which one it was. And then to the south, it's the city of Eloy. So they'd have to go through them if they wanted to expand to the south.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, it's, it's Chewy, Chewy Choo, is that? Chew Chew. It's to the west there, to the north. And my understanding is there's going to be a wall around this one, a solid wall on the north and on the east side of it. I've seen conceptual drawings of this.
Any other questions or comments?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Here's to item number eight. Evan.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chair. My name is Evan Evangelopoulos with Planning. And I am presenting today another solar project south of Arizona City. This one is about, it's about 10 miles west of Picacho Peak and about eight miles south of Eloy, south of I-10. So it's, it's mostly agricultural land right now. And it's with some, with some scattered homes. And a very interesting old store that I saw that across the street. It's not part of the project. So it's, it's large. It's 1,200 acres. And the owner is John and Melinda Donley, SWCA, the consultants. And the applicant is Anthony Pedroni and Associates. You can see here where it's located approximately. It's actually exactly, it borders exactly the, the city of Eloy. The, where it has expanded right now. And this is the project. And currently there's a tapestry of comprehensive plan uses there. I, it's very interesting. I am, I'm not sure how that came to be. But we'll see. This is the, the city of Eloy to the north. And there's a project again, another aerial. And it's about 350 megawatts of, of energy, photovoltaic solar generating facility. It's going to have three phases. Let me go back to. There you go. It's going to have three phases. Each phase is, is planned to last for about a year. It's close to the, to the transmission grid. So that's the advantage of the location. And there's the, the site plan showing, there's a battery storage area to the southwest of the project. Initially, let me show you. Initially, the, the applicant was planning on two different comprehensive plan designations, green energy production and general public facility services. Because they were confused about the designation of the battery storage area. But it's going to be just the, the first one, green energy production. And you can see here the general plan, current general plan designations. Any questions?
Any questions?
Seems that, that area is attracting a lot of many solar facilities.
Vacant land.
Yeah.
All that old farmland, there ain't no water to grow anything on. You gotta do something with it.
Okay.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you, Evan.
You're welcome.
Brings to item number nine, the one we're looking for, I guess. The last one. Gilbert, are you going to do this one?
I'm going to tee it off, sir. So the next one, I believe, if you show on the agenda was for the, the text amendment.
The text amendment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And we have, our consultant is here today. He's going to further explain this text. This is like, as mentioned before, this was started when we had the Arizona State Land Department moving forward with their comprehensive plan amendment and possible zone applications that never happened. So we're still moving forward with the text amendment. But our consultant with Michael Baker is going to further explain this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert.
Thank you, Chair and fellow supervisors. Matt Kleisico with Michael Baker International, 2929 North Central Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona. Just as a slight adjustment to Gilbert's comments, what I'll be talking to you today about for this large master plan community text amendment is actually kind of a, a compendium effort to the text amendment that was brought before you in a work session for the MPCMP district that the county currently has. So this request today is actually to go over creating a new zoning district for large master plan communities that would be focused just for residential development. The MPCMP district that the county currently has is for non-residential development. This is to look at and address residential development. So that's just one clarifying component. And I'll get through the history on that in a little more detail in the next few slides. We have some great detail on these slides. The detail was provided to the Planning Commission who has to initiate a text amendment when the county brings it forward. So I'm going to kind of abbreviate some of these because I think you'll be familiar with the process a little more than some of the Planning Commissioners that had requested some more detailed information. But certainly if there's anything that I need to pause on, please let me know. We all understand that currently the county utilizes a PAD process to predominantly establish many of their large residential subdivisions. And so that PAD process, while it's an overlay, it requires hard zoning, if you will, specific zoning districts for the residential areas. So you see the graphic on the right there that while you might have a PAD over a large area, it's actually zoned all those individual zoning districts. So what happens through the development process is when a developer sometimes wants to come in and maybe change a product on that approved PAD, it often requires a zone change request on top of making that adjustment when they need to move some of those zoning districts around, even if they're not increasing the total, the total dwelling units for that PAD project. So, so that creates a challenge sometimes when we're looking at very large master plan communities. And so at the same time, as I mentioned before, the county had moved forward with the, a development of the MPCMP district, which is a hard zone zoning district that at that time was being proposed for the Atessa project. And that you can see from the graphics on the right, the difference between the PAD and this MPCMP process is that you actually zone the property, this MPCMP. And then as part of the application material, provide a plan, a development plan with it that breaks it out into these development areas. And then that's used to actually guide development within the project. And so that MPCMP district was set up, it was approved, and it was limited to developments that were 2,000 acres or more. So following the development of that MPCMP district, develop, members of the development community, as well as State Land Department, came forward to planning staff and said, you know, this MPCMP district for non-residential development could make a lot of sense and is utilized in other areas for residential development. We would like to propose and look at developing a sing, a similar type of district for residential development. The county recognized that potential and chose to carry that request forward as the applicant so that the county could better control the development of that text amendment. So that's what brought us here today, is that state statute requires the Planning Commission to initiate a text amendment when it's brought forward by the county. So we went through that process with the Planning Commission. They initiated the process. And so now we're here presenting to you to give a little more background. And the process will move forward with a presentation to Planning Commission again for recommendation and then brought before Board of Supervisors for ultimate approval if found to be acceptable. So specifically, this large-scale residential project, you know, recognizes that these efforts develop over an extended period of time. This large master plan community district is solely focused on residential development, but still needs to maintain those appropriate limitations for the, the character and intensity of uses and the compatibility with surrounding development. So we'll talk a little bit about some of those safeguards that were put in place in the actual text itself. And then as I mentioned before, this LMPC district would be a standalone zoning district, which would actually in essence show up on our zoning map. So within the actual text itself, which I know that was provided in your packets, we tried to, because it has been established, we use the MPCMP district as a very strong starting point or framework for the development of this LMPC district. So it mimics the sections and the approach and requirements of that very closely. So we obviously have the minimum land development standard that it has to be 2,000 acres or more. If you're less than that, you'd have to go through the standard PAD process. The approval of the master plan would require the development plan, which I discussed. So as part of that, you create a development plan and in that you show development areas that would have specific density and, and intensities applied to them. With this residential development, it could have commercial and office uses in association and support of that residential development. But the residential development would have to be the primary land use within that application. It has the standard plating and site plan process requirements. And then it also has, which is very important, detailed amendment criteria. So when a project is approved under this and they, the applicant desires to make an adjustment, there are specific limitations within the text amendment itself that would limit what can be amended or what would trigger a major or minor amendment. So for example, one thing that was discussed with the Planning Commission upon initiation is to make sure there's controls, that if there's density in one development area, that all of that density couldn't be just moved out into another development area, let's say on the opposite side of this 2,000 acres and possibly impact adjacent development beyond what was originally discussed when the zoning district was created. And so in those amendment criterias, it limits that to 10% shift and also has limitations on how many times that can occur. So there's a lot of safeguards and we can certainly through the approval process, continue to evaluate those and revise those as needed. But with that, I think I can just open it up to any questions.
Any questions? I talked to staff a while back on this one. Was there talk about reducing the acreage on the 2,000 and to something smaller at one point?
We had, when we began this drafting process, We had, when we began this drafting process, we had always stayed with that 2,000 acre requirement and did not receive any feedback as we were looking at that. So it's certainly something we could explore if there is a need, but at this point, I'm not aware of any other considerations.
Even 1,000 acres is a lot of acreage. I mean, that's a section and a half.
Yes.
You know, so I don't know, I was just curious and I've always wondered why we picked that 2,000. I mean, I, that's just a tremendous amount of, you know, acreage to tie up and maybe smaller units might be a little more.
It is a city in and of its.
Yeah, and, and there might be some advantage to bringing that down, bringing that number down. I don't, I don't want to see it for, you know, 100 acres, but I think when you get to something like 1,000 acres, that's still a lot of land. So I was just curious how we established the 2,000 and why and if there's.
I, I can honestly, Chair, I think it's a great observation. I can say that we just went with precedent and with the 2,000 acres previously vetted and discussed, that's our starting point, but I think it's a, a very fair comment that we can certainly explore as we take this to the Planning Commission and from there certainly bring their discussion before the supervisors.
Okay, I appreciate it. Any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
I had the same question that the chairman proposed and so, you know, we can maybe provide the same flexibility for smaller developers and, and I don't know if, if it's possible to, to have a text amendment that gives more flexibility down to a very small size so that, so that smaller developers have a little bit of flexibility and how that would impact existing zoning and so on. So I'd like to hear that discussion.
Yeah, I, thank you Supervisor Kavanaugh aboard. I think one of the things that was, that we were wanting to make sure we're sensitive to is the county, you know, has a very established and even refined PAD process and that process obviously has been and is currently utilized for much of the development within the county. So one of the things we want to be sensitive to is not to strip away that tool within the county and there are, especially within, I think, the community standpoint, maybe not so much from the developer standpoint, but in the community, that PAD process provides some safeguards of, of certainty. And so when we get down to smaller projects, there is a level that, that I know was expressed at the Planning Commission when this was discussed of wanting to maintain those protections that, that this does give more flexibility to a developer. And so when we're in a large project that's a city in and of itself, those changes are not going to impact adjacent development as much as a smaller PAD will. So I think the comment certainly holds water that we can evaluate whether 1,000 acres is right, but there was certainly discussion about not wanting to go too low where it takes away from the PAD tool, which is still intended to be the primary tool for majority of development.
I just was thinking when the, the CFD, I think the requirement is 620, isn't it? Or something like it's. So I, I was just, you know, again, I just try and look at other zoning or other things that are done, other tools that are used. So anyway, but it's great discussion and if we can look into it, I think it's worth the time.
I think it's very thoughtful and we'll certainly come back to you with further feedback.
Okay. Anything else? That'll be good. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned. That's it.